Okay, I call this meeting to order for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the horrible violence that took place this morning at Abundant Life Christian School in Madison. And I ask that you stand and observe a moment of silence to honor those victims of gun violence. Thank you. Okay, so this is the special meeting portion of our, of our, of our work tonight. And we're going to start with a roll call. Kinsey? Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Yeah.
Crossan?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Very good. The next thing out of the thing. Tonight, we are joined by some very special people. We have representatives from the Southwest, some Southwest High School esports team, Preble High School Boys Cross Country, Preble High School Girls Cross Country, and Preble High School Boys Soccer Team. And we're going to call you up one, one team at a time. If you could have your, if you have your team captain, or your coach, or some representative from your group, and then the rest, if you would come behind up at the podium. Some pictures will be snapped, but we'd love to hear a little bit about your season and just some highlights and, and let us recognize your big accomplishments. So we're going to start with Southwest High School Esports.
So coaching students, come on up.
Yep, coaches, students. That's okay. It's okay. We, if, we'd love to hear about esports in general because I think it's something that... Can we go with the other ones and then come back to us?
Yeah.
Well, that would be, that would be an option. Absolutely. So we'll, 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 we'll give it a little bit more time. And so next would be Preble High School Boys Cross Country Team. Ooh, that's a big, big trophy. So this is, Preble High School Boys Cross Country were sectional champions. If you, I don't know who's going to speak on behalf of the team, but cuddle around there, guys, so that we can get a nice picture. Make sure everyone's faces, is, we can see everyone's face. So tell us about your season.
Sure. Hi, I'm Kyle McMahon, the Boys Cross Country Coach. And yeah, we had a terrific season. The guys that are here are the qualifiers from the state meet and the conference champions and the alternates that ran. So we went into the season with a lot of hopes and expectations. We returned a lot of hardworking runners from last year. And we really hit the ground, like literally running in the summer, like putting in a ton of miles and running every day and working hard together. And we were undefeated the whole entire season up until the state meet. We ran at a fifty, in the middle of the season, we ran at a fifty-plus team meet with a lot of the best teams from Illinois and Wisconsin. And we won that meet and really put ourselves up on the top of like the state recognition list. And that just kept flowing through the rest of the year and winning conference and sectionals and make states. So the guys here, you know, work super hard. They push each other, you know, putting in fifty-plus miles every week. You know, eight-mile workouts, everything that you'd expect from them and working like super hard together. A lot of leaders, hardworking kids on the team. We had great support from around Preble and the school district alumni and everyone that was involved. You know, we, at Preble, the administrators, you know, set us up for great success with our, you know, weight room and opportunities that they give us to really be flexible with what we do for practice. And our new, I'm sure Saka will talk about this, but our new setup at Preble was really helpful too for all the success we've had. So yeah, Ben Piantek is one of our captains. I thought he could give a just quick perspective from the runner's aspect, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Ben Piantek. I'm a captain. This year was definitely my favorite year of cross country. I ran all four years. This was definitely our more, our most successful year, obviously just with winning meets, but it was also for me the most fun year. I thought just going to practice every day was always my favorite part of the day. And I'm just really happy that I had such good teammates to run with. And I just also want to thank the coaches and all the parents for helping us out. We really couldn't have done it without them. So I was just, I thought it was a really successful and fun season.
Very good. Anybody, anybody else want to speak? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, next is Preble High School Girls Cross Country. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Hi, I'm Hannah Smith. I'm one of the captains on the team. This overall was a great season for everyone here, honestly, even the other sports. We were sectional champs first time in 20 years. We were, wait, conference champs, sorry. Conference champs first time in 20 years. We were sectional champs back to back. We went to state two times in a row. We had records. Our freshmen set the new school record, but in the same race, senior Melina Weber set, or also broke the school record. Lots of work was put in. We had 8:00 AM workouts on homecoming. Can imagine with girls on the team that went well. This was by far my favorite year as a senior. We had numerous athletes of the week. It's just very thankful for the opportunity and of course, thanks to our coaches who made it all happen. And our parents couldn't be more grateful for them too. But yeah, just overall.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say anything? Coach?
As you know, if you, if you're involved in distance running or endurance sports, you know that this doesn't happen in one season, right? The girls don't come to practice on, in August and say, hey, let's be good this year. This, this comes from years of training and years of commitment. And the coaches are there every year, but these girls have put in the work year after year after year. And it's just been a pleasure. I mean, you heard the guys say that this is my, their favorite part of the day. And the girls have heard me say, I look forward to coming to practice to work with these girls every single day. So it's just been a pleasure this year, but on a personal level, it's just been great because I've had, I got two of my daughters on the team currently and one of, one of my daughters graduated just to see the success from each of them and be a part of that has just been a dream. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, can, can someone tell us what the new school record is? Yeah, who's, who's got the new school record?
It's 1852 for a 5K.
Okay, thank you. Right. Next is Preble High School Boys Soccer Team. Come on up. I'm seeing a lot of blonde hair. All right.
Hi, my name's Chris Becker. I'm the head coach. This season was tremendous. My dad has always told, talked, told me to, you know, underpropice and overdeliver. And that's what these guys basically did all season long. We had a lot of seniors graduate last year and I think things were up in the air going into the season. We knew we had talent, but we had a lot of parts that were had to get added. And it took us a while to really find our, our stride. As Coach Kyle said, I think having that turf field at Preble has made a huge difference in how we can practice, team camaraderie, all sorts of things. Having, being able to practice, you know, after a football game at night on Mondays, being able to put in music and just having good vibes, it really brought the team together. And as you can see by all the hair, it really did bring us together for the state tournament. We struggled in the beginning and lost three games in the beginning of the year and, or four games. And three out of the teams that we played, we beat in the playoffs. So it just showed the growth going, going forward. So, and these guys helped me do something I've never done in my history of my career, not only as a player when I was in high school, but as a coach was beat Marquette. And I've been playing Marquette since I was a freshman in high school and not even come close. And these guys did something for me that I've, I will never forget in, in my lifetime. So this time I'll like, one of our captains, Ben, come talk.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ben Raul. I'm one of the senior captains for our squad here. And I would just like to take a moment to thank all the coaches and thank all my teammates for being here. And this season, I mean, it's been so great and unforgettable. What a way to go out. And we made history. We beat DePere. Coach Becker hasn't beat DePere in like, I think, four, five years. So did that as well. And I just want to say thank you. Yep.
That's a, that's a very impressive trophy. Oh, thank you. Should we, should we all go? Yeah, I, I think you guys are, you're on to something with the blonde hair. I know it's a trend right now and that, anyway. Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing your season with us and congratulations. All right, do we have anybody from Southwest? All right.
I'm going to consult my notes and do my best.
That's good. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you know much about esports, but esports is a really cool opportunity where students who may tradition, may not traditionally participate in like the regular sporting events that we have, have an opportunity to do gaming and gaming is considered a sport for them. They work extremely hard at it. They are there multiple nights a week, really honing that gaming craft. They have some extremely expensive equipment that I can't work myself for sure. And they work really, really super hard. And so every night that they practice, they have three coaches there. Stacy Rubensor, who is our LMC support person, Efren Zarida, who works with, through the district, and Patrick Nouveau, who is a monitor, a monitor for our school. And they all work really, really, really hard. And because of that, they actually, in a few weeks ago, went to the state Division II tournament for Smash and, which is a type of game, and their team brought home the state championship for that. So it was a really, really cool opportunity for them to shine. And it's a lot of students that don't always see the recognition in, in the school system because they're not a basketball player, they're not a volleyball player, and they got a chance to really do that. So they brought home the 2024 state championship. And it also put us in, like on the radar for college esports because there's actually college esports out there. So it was a huge achievement for our esports team who started probably a couple, hasn't been very long. So they were super proud of their achievement, super proud of, of the accomplishment of gaming for sport, which was really, really awesome.
So thank you for coming tonight and sharing that with us and congratulations.
Thanks.
So, yeah, I, so before any of you leave and we go on with the rest of our night, if you are a parent, a guardian, a family member, or just a supporter of these fine young people, could you please stand up and be recognized? Thank you so much, everybody, for coming out and sharing with us tonight. All right. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna just take a couple of minutes here, guys, while the room clears. Do you want to take us through? Yes, please. All right, so Kale's going to take us through kind of how we're going to proceed with the scoring. Can you do that? Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So first of all, I'll start with, we have, obviously, the three brokers will be bringing in to interview. I hope everyone got a chance to see the proposals that were uploaded in the, the file. If not, please let me know. And if we need to get a hard copy, we, we absolutely can for you. But based on that proposal and then the interview tonight, what I've requested, kind of per our conversation, was if they felt necessary, the brokers could provide about a 10 to 15-minute presentation and introduction. And then beyond that, it would just be questions from the board. So we've allotted 45 minutes for each group. With, we've built in about a 15-minute break between each. If we don't need that, certainly we don't need to take that full time. And we'll kind of keep this moving as, as quickly as we can. I've also then provided a workbook for everyone and I'm just checking if everyone has access to it. If you, hey, I can fill it in too, if you want to score manually. But basically, it's pretty simple. We have the grading criteria. And then I kind of broke that down into detail. I've also, what I shared with you a few weeks ago, this should be a similar grading criteria to what you saw in a Word document in that same file. So it's just a little more pre, kind of, pre-populated questions, if you want to utilize those. If not, feel free to ask any, obviously, any questions that you want to. But the grading criteria are what we had discussed and what went through in the RFP and what was addressed in the proposals. So then there's dropdown menus for each vendor. We're going in alphabetical order. And then basically you can just score with the dropdown menu for the allotted points. So you can see in the criteria have also highlighted the, or noted the point totals. So you shouldn't be able to exceed it. And then it just automatically fills in in that totals. And each board member has their own tab at the bottom of the workbook. So please be filling in your own tab.
Can you, I, I don't know that I can, yeah, you're going to have to show me where that is.
Let's go to, go to.
This isn't what I'm, should be looking at? Yeah, I've got that. I ran that off. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
It was way more complicated before and I simplified it. So, yes.
So if I, so nothing, nothing happens when I click on mine?
Well, it's there. It's the same spreadsheet. So you will, it's not refreshing because it's exactly the same.
All right.
If you, if anyone just wants to score manually on a piece of paper, I can upload it to.
And I also, I, I, you know, I might take some notes on, along the way and fill it in at the, you know, later. So.
Their notes?
Yeah.
That's me. So if you see someone in your spreadsheet, that's a problem.
Uh-oh.
Okay. I just went away because I was, it was me.
Wait a minute. So am I not in the right place?
You're in the right place.
Okay.
I went to yours.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Okay. And like I said, after the first interview here, we'll just do a quick check-in, make sure we, we did it right. And then if not, we can go back and, and adjust. So. Correct. Yep. Really, it's, it's 100 points. Instead of using kind of a weighted grade, we just did a point system just to make it easier. So the first one is one through 20, or zero through 20 points, zero through 15 or zero through 10.
So if this particular, you know, if, if we really, really like them a lot, you give them 20 points?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And so on. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Do we want to have a certain order for asking questions or is it going to be as they come up? Or what would we like to do as a board?
I don't have a preference. I was envisioning people being able to ask questions. Yeah, just raise your hand if you, I mean, yeah. Is everyone comfortable with that? All right. But at least, but if, if you have multiple questions, let everyone else ask theirs until, we'll try to keep it in that order at least. Let everyone have a crack before the next, you ask your second question. So.
So in the, they are in the agenda, I think, let's use the agenda one. Is that okay?
Yeah, in the agenda for the, for the special meeting, the first is Ben Bartolazzi. Bartolazzi, is that right? Yeah. And then NAI, Pfefferly, and then commercial. Yeah, so. Are the, are the first people here yet? We, so everyone get comfortable and make sure you know what you're, you know, if you have any questions, now's the time to ask. Yeah, you'll have to get into your computer and, and, and look at your emails. Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll bring in the first group.
Rick, are you good? Are you good? Okay, everybody good? All right. Are we late? We're good? Okay.
Hitting that, that means you're live.
Okay.
Welcome. Hi, hi. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
All right. I am Ben Bartolazzi. I own Ben Bartolazzi Real Estate. And we are located in Aloe, on Webster Avenue. I've been selling real estate for about 17 years. In 2007, I got my real estate license. So let me kind of go backwards. Most people, when they choose to hire us, they have to put their faith and trust in us. And it's hard to do that without knowing who I am personally as well. So I am the youngest of seven children, grew up in the Little Swamaco area, big Catholic Italian family. My dad was a home builder, so I grew up building homes. I framed, finished, did masonry work with him. And then while I was studying economics at UWGB, I was still working in the field with him. And then in 2007 is when I got my real estate license. During that time, obviously, the market was much different during the Great Recession. So I really learned the skill of prospecting, lead generating, following up on leads. And that is kind of your foundation to real estate sales is by hitting the phones and being proactive on getting the business. So. So that's, in 2013, I helped Caleb Hayes start up Keller Williams in Green Bay and Fox Cities. And then in 2019, I sold my shares and started up Bartolazzi Real Estate. So we've been a small, just a small mom-and-pop shop for the past almost six years now. So that's, and then I'm married. I have four children. My wife was actually an elementary art teacher in the Green Bay School District for about 15 years. And she actually taught at Keller Elementary and Tank Elementary for, for several of those years. Yeah. So, and then my father, my father-in-law was a, was the PE teacher at Edison for about 30 years. And he's retired, living the life in Florida now. So.
Okay. And I'm Rebecca Larson. I had joined Ben's team back in, actually, just this summer. Before that, I did real estate for McDonald Companies where my main focus was on the industrial side of commercial real estate development, the management, property management. So when I decided that it was time for a new adventure, I've known Ben for a while now, liked him as a person, trusted him and was like, hey, let's, let's build this together and let's take on some fun projects. I'm also married. I have got two little kids. Just keeping busy with, between real estate and the whole mom life thing. So joining Ben's team has been a really good, good thing for us. And I've, I've gotten to learn a lot in the short time I've been with them. But we were very creative people and we like to take on a good challenge.
Yeah, so you know, when, when we sell real estate, there's three aspects to selling real estate. It's got to look good. And when you're selling commercial real estate, it's got to, the financials have to look good, right? So when we would list these properties, we would want to make sure that we're taking drone pictures, videos, professional photography, so that way it's appealing to the eye for that investor with their looking at online, LoopNet or whatever real estate website that they're searching on, on our MLS. But then we, I do believe that having some conceptual plans would be important for the investors to be able to see what the potential of these properties could be so they can work their numbers backwards to see if this investment would work for them. So the showability online is going to be extremely important. That's what we specialize in. And then the pricing of these properties is going to be extremely important too. And, and the only way we can really price them is by running the numbers backwards for these investors. If they plan on purchasing it and occupying the property, or most likely, it's going to be investor that's probably going to be using, because there's a lot of land with these properties too. um, using, because there's a lot of land with these properties too. So having surveyors and uh, contractors involved to be able to see what the best use for these properties and to maximize um, the uh, I guess the profits for them. And so if they can make more money, then we can sell the properties for more money. And the goal when selling real estate is to sell it for as much as we possibly can. And so we want to be able to provide that value proposition to those investors, so it's attractive to them.
Okay, go ahead, no, you go ahead.
I was just gonna add on, I think with Ben and I's experience with building out performas and being able to kind of have that financial business background, it really helps us speak to these investors in a little bit of a different way to say, hey, we understand what ROI you're looking for, what, what you need to get on this end. So let, like Ben said, we can work these numbers backwards to really make these a business action for somebody that makes sense for not only the school district, but also the person that's gonna end up buying them.
Alright, any, anything else you want to share?
No.
Okay. Alright, James?
Uh, thanks for coming in tonight. Um, you, you said the word conceptual, and I, in reading your response, putting together a conceptual plan, walk me through that. Because um, you've used the terms surveyors, contractors, um, and there's um, a, a potentiality that requires skilled labor uh, to, to develop. And in, in the process, kind of where does that fit? You, you put it in front of actually valuing the, all the properties and engaging sellers. Um, how does that get done, right? Did I have not been through that process before, can you just educate me?
So the process would be you would look at the plot of land and um, and I've sold uh, many um, and I actually have a property under contract right now in Ledgeview, where it's twelve acres. And you talk to the surveyor on um, how many units we can get in order to be able to um, either uh, improve the uh, like those parcels, to be able to either flip those parcels and sell them, uh, or to hold on to it. So um, so I work hand-in-hand with the surveyor and the contractor to um, look at density for units. The more density you can add to these parcels, the more um, profit margin you can add. So, so basically you, and all of these properties, I pulled up aerial shots of all the properties that were in the RFP. And um, it's collaborating with the surveyor and saying, okay, based upon your experience, how should we lay out these properties and where can we get the most density? And then with the contractors, it's going to be walking through the buildings and seeing how we can utilize the space that we have uh, in the most efficient way possible. Um, I think that's, you know.
Can I call it just once?
Yes.
Okay, so now I think I understand. The parties involved, I had imagined that this would inform a marketing strategy. And really, you have potential buyers and they are the contractors. Is that how I'm to understand this? And you are working with potentials to, and the surveyors to figure out what, what we could actually use the property for? I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that A, I understand the process and B, I know this is a service that you provide and it, associated costs, and they're just baked into the sale? Or if there's an obligation to the district?
Uh, the, the conceptual plans, a lot of the contractors will give us a, um, I guess a, a, I don't know, an overview of what they feel like they'd be able to uh, do to the building and at what price. And so a lot of times they'll do that free of charge and uh, in hopes that they get the business on the backside. As well as surveyors, there might be some uh, fees to that. Um, that is something that we, as realtors, would take on those fees, to be able to have that for our marketing materials. Because we know what most investors want, they want their ROI to be as high as possible. And so we can find the best use for these properties to be able to go and sell it to a buyer. So we may have buyers, you know, that are in our database right now, that might be potentially uh, good fits for these properties. But uh, it's a lot easier to show them the value instead of um, the vision of it. It's much easier if you can show them on paper. Or at least have high, high-level conversations with them that are very um, I guess, direct into like, hey, you can get this many units, this is what we could sell them for, or this is what you'd be able to rent these units out for. And so we can run their performa back, say, this is what your rate of return would be. And that's how we generate, um, that's how we'll generate hopefully buyers to, to be able to purchase it.
I think too, these contractors are able to help us really think through the proposed uses too. And oftentimes, they will have people in their database where they're like, oh, we know so-and-so is looking for this opportunity. And because we have those relationships, now we can tap into those as well too.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Lynn.
I have a couple really quick little uh, short ones. Have you ever sold a school?
I have not sold a school. Uh, I just, last year I closed a monastery down in Burlington. And that was like a hundred, over a hundred thousand square feet, a hundred acres. Um, and it was a lot of little rooms and stuff. Um, I sold a old schoolhouse, but it was converted into a home. So I wouldn't consider that, I guess, what these properties are.
And how many people do you have on your team?
There are ten agents and we have four staff members.
Nick?
Given the uh, the economy, the economic situation, wha- what's your anticipated sale cycle from, from when awarded to? When do you, when would you anticipate closing the deal?
Um, these deals can take quite a while, because you might have to go to zoning changing. Um, and first, the, the conceptual plan is just like the, you know, fifty-foot view, basically, right? So then they might have to get, in order to get financing, they might have to meet with more architects to get the actual plan, um, surveys done. So you might be, it really depends on how much demand we can create. My goal would be that we're negotiating on these properties where we have multiple people interested that say, you buy it and then you figure it out from there, you change the zoning, you um, go through that whole process. Um, but it really depends on how much uh, demand that we have. If we're chasing after buyers, that could take up to, you know, a year and a half. It could take quite a while to go through all that zoning process and to get those estimates back. Um, so it really depends on how much interest we have in it.
Go ahead.
Do you have any potential prospective customers at this point?
Yeah, yeah, I would say we work with several investors as well as contractors um, that are always looking to invest in real estate assets and holdings. If I can go and show them, hey, you're gonna get a really good rate of return on this, then yeah, we could generate buyers for it.
Brian?
What type of experience do you have working with uh, community-based organizations, nonprofit organizations that may be interested in some of these properties as well?
So um, our experience with the nonprofit sector is the ones we're working closely with right now, the ones that are looking for more space, they are looking for, I would say, school-like facilities that are, have the gyms, the ability to have a um, sensory room. Um, one of the cus- clients right now that we have is Counting Stars. Um, they're a newer organization to the Green Bay area, but their service offering kind of complements the other um, organizations that are kind of doing the same thing. And right now, they're in the YWCA and they've just, they've outgrown it, their services are in such a high demand. Um, so organizations like that, where they're growing, um, is kind of where I would say we've been fortunate enough to get involved in these organizations, to be able to be their agent that they're relying on to help them find a good, a good home for, that's a good investment for them.
I'm also on the board for Habitat for Humanity. Um, not sure where that would necessarily fit in, uh, but there is a lot of vacant land there. I don't know, do you guys work closely with um, I, I, I guess, what is the relationship between you guys and the city of Green Bay or other municipalities? I mean, they're just kind of, are they, they're all, they're separate entities, right? So, but you guys work together on?
Um, there's occasionally overlap, uh, we have, uh, the history of our district is kind of um, complicated with the city and that this city and this district used to be one.
Okay.
And at some point they separated, but it, it's still playing out to some degree in that, like, for instance, we just built a new stadium on city land at West.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, like, there's, there's variations on that kind of thing throughout our district. Um, so that sometimes can lead to um, some complex, some complexity.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
We're used to working with the city though, on a lot of different issues. So I mean, there's, there's, and Kale's nodding, so that's good. So there's, there's a lot of, you know, experience with it and there's communication stuff there. So it's just, it's kind of tricky, who owns what and where, and it's interesting to see, there's a working relationship with them.
Yeah, that, I hope I didn't give the impression that we don't, we have a very good relationship with the city of Green Bay, so. Um, it's just, it's just complicated with the district and the city, uh, historically, so. Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, I, I trust you have um, taken a look at the properties that we want to sell and you have thought about them. Do you have any kind of um, inspiration for any particular one that you think this would be just perfect for a blank?
Well, my uh, my first house was actually two blocks away from Elmore. And so we would walk by it to get ice cream at Hanson's. Um, and I feel like that, that kind, that reminds me a lot of what they did over at, was it Whitney Park? Um, so condos, as well as maybe some townhomes in there. I think that would be a really nice um, thing for that community, I love that neighborhood, it's just a beautiful neighborhood. So I think that would be really a nice use for that property. Um, you know, Wickleyak, I think would be great for senior housing, it's just a nice peaceful area out there, so potentially that. Um, what else, do you have some other ideas?
Um, we discussed the land around Elmore, being able to kind of parcel that off, re-lan laid, being able to parcel off some of the backside of it. Um, and would we say five or six houses could most likely fit? Um, so we did, we've been throwing around some ideas of different, I mean, even beyond what's in our RFP, we've been kind of throwing stuff around to see what we're like, oh, that's really exciting and that, that might work, so.
Yeah, and even like uh, MacArthur, uh, just being near Lambeau Field. I think that might be a neat setup to turn that into more like short-term rentals. Um, being around the Lambeau Field area, whatever we've, I mean, we have to walk through the properties to kind of see how they're laid out and the best use for the properties. But I think there's a lot of options, especially with uh, Keller, that has so much vacant land around uh, Keller. And one of the biggest issues that we have in Brown County, but I think in general, is single-family housing right now. It's extremely low inventory. And um, a lot of the land is just going for really high prices. Um, so I think it'd be nice to be able to, and it's out in the outskirts, you're not seeing uh, properties, um, new subdivisions going on in the city. And I think it would be a really nice uh, thing to be able to provide to the community as well as having some new subdivisions in the city, a little bit higher density type of properties. But uh, that would be the goal, is to make them higher density, because typically you sell these um, uh, and I've done several sub- subdivisions for investors where we've, you know, done seventy-five uh, parcel um, subdivisions. I'm doing one right now that's about uh, forty-eight parcels. And so the more density you can have is because you sell these parcels per lot, it's not as much per acre. And so if you can get more density, then you can usually get a better ROI on them. And that's what the goal would be, is, is that if you're hiring us, our job is to represent you in these transactions to be able to get the biggest return on investment. And if we can, if we can show these investors they can make more money, then they'll pay more for it. And that's gonna be our goal.
I appreciate that, and I've actually spent a year uh, Whitney School, um, and it's a really great, uh, great place. Um, what por- proportion of your current and like historical listings would you say fall within the commercial real estate space versus the residential space? So, you know, when you look at your, your business and how you've oriented yourselves, um, how big of a project would this be?
Well, uh, the majority of our business is in the residential field. Um, single-family homes, subdivisions, um, uh, land sales, that's the majority of our business. Um, and we sell about three to four hundred properties every year. Um, and we're a top-five team in the state of Wisconsin as far as volume sold. I've been in that field, the, one of the top agents in Brown County over the past uh, five years. Um, I will do about five commercial transa- on average, about five commercial transactions a year. But I would categorize these a little bit more on the residential, because really, I, I feel like these are going to be going in to the residential field, multifamily. Uh, there will be some commercial stuff if it's senior housing. But uh, you, I think it is important that you have someone who knows the residential side, because this is, it, we're not selling, I mean, it could be an office building and we have the Columbia Suites for sale downtown, right across from the uh, courthouse. And so we've done, we do have the experience on the commercial side, it's just we do a lot on the residential side. And the value with that too, is is we have a lot of contacts, because we sell a lot of real estate. And the mo- and real estate would kind of make, um, I make a joke of it, but it's true, is real estate's a contact sport. The more contacts you have, the more properties you're gonna sell.
Sorry, anybody, go, go ahead.
Guys, thank you for coming out. Um, with, with real estate transactions, regardless if it's residential uh, or a commercial, residential, you don't see it as often, but uh, uh, from my experience, sometimes these hidden fees kind of show up during closings, because most of the time, individuals get to that point, you know, they don't usually back out or they can't back out, because you put all that time and effort in it. I'm just curious, with this magnitude of a project or a real estate that's gonna be on the market, uh, does your company has any kind of uh, hidden fees and there were just strictly the commissions?
Yeah, so the fees that you should expect on the sale would be um, the commission. And then I think we have in our RFP that it's a four hundred ninety-five dollar administrative fee at closing. That's all that you would uh, receive from us. Um, unless it's negotiated otherwise in the offer to purchase, and you'll understand what you would be agreeing to at that time. Um, nothing's too payable unless we close on the properties. And then does, I guess, you probably wouldn't have to pay uh, Wisconsin tax transfer fee, would you? Do you know if you would or not, being a nonprofit? I don't, I guess that would be something I'd have to look into, but typically on a real estate sale, there would be a Wisconsin tax transfer fee, title insurance, and then some other like recording fees from the title company. Um, and those would be, those would be your fees, yeah. And we can break it down, um, as far as what the list price is, here are your fees, this is what you would net. So we can provide some estimated uh, proc- or uh, estimated closing statements.
Thank you.
Anybody, go ahead, go ahead.
Where, where do you see the market, uh, and then is there any one of these properties that you think would be a deterrence for sale? Is there any aspect of the buildings, the schools, that would, that you think would deter a buyer?
Well, these are, I mean, they, I'd have to walk through the buildings to be able to really give you a better answer on that. But some of these buildings are older, so if you have to stick a lot of capital into these buildings just because of deferred maintenance or whatever that might be, that can be a deterrent, because obviously that hurts their bottom line as an investor. So that, uh, it does take some creativity to repurpose these properties. And so that's why I want to make sure that I'm working with a contractor that we can uh, give potential buyers that um, that visual, so they don't have to use their imagination as much, because it actually speeds up the process for them to make their decision then too. Because, you know, when you got, when you got a, a fish nibbling on the hook, you want to make sure you can set the hook and reel it in. And you, you have to have the tools to be able to do that, which is some of these conceptual plans. Um, but yeah, these will, these aren't necessarily like easy sales where it's a, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar house that you put on the market and it's, you have ten offers on it in twenty-four hours. Yeah, so they will take a lot of time and effort. And that's the value, you know, having two of us working on it together, as well as we have four staff members that will be. As well as we have four staff members that will be assisting us. We have a listing coordinator, transaction coordinator that's, uh, in the office, uh, handling and helping us with our transactions. So, we can be focused on being realtors and real estate brokers to be able to have conversations with buyers, to be able to hopefully convince them to purchase the property at a price that we want to sell it at. Um, so, yeah, that's.
Last question. Um, given that this is, this could have the potential being a long-term sale cycle, is there a point in time where you said, guys, this is just, we're not going to get this done? And, uh, i- is there something in, envisioned in mind that, that you would have, that you, at this point in time, you'd be willing to talk about?
Um,
tough question.
I would say that I don't get paid unless I close on the property. And, you know, my dad worked me pretty hard growing up, uh, Mason Ruric framing. So, I mean, I take a, um, I could, I take a construction work ethic into real estate sales. So, no, I keep on working until the job is done. You know, I mean, we might have more like conversations, obviously, like, hey, this is what we need to do in order to get these properties sold. Um, but I'm never going to dictate what needs to be done. It's a collaboration on the goal of, let's get these properties sold. The goal always is to sell for top dollar, right? But it is also to sell it. So, it's going to be, you know, that, I guess we'll see when that time comes. But yeah, we'll be communicating on a regular basis on different strategies in order to get these sold. So, there, there's no cutoff time. The cutoff time is when it's closed. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for meeting with us. Um, I think Kale will be your next point of contact, probably.
Yeah. So, so, um, we do have an action item tonight to vote on this, um, after, after we've completed interviews. Um, so I will follow up, uh, with you tomorrow morning on, on results, um, or if anything else changes. And, uh, we'll go from there. Uh, there's, uh, just a couple of minutes left. If there was anything else you just wanted to close with, or if there's any other final questions that we had.
I would like to say, just in closing, I really appreciate the opportunity and we would be honored for you guys to pick us as your real estate broker. Um, I look forward to the challenge of selling these properties and being strategic and creative on getting these properties sold. And, um, I do think that we bring an element to, uh, to this that, um, that we are commercial, we're on LoopNet, CoStar, where all other commercial agents and brokers are. But we also are part of the Realtors Association of Northeast Wisconsin. So, we are hitting a large group of people, realtors, as well as real estate, commercial brokers, that we are exposing it to more people, which I think gives us a nice competitive advantage to be able to sell it for as much as we possibly can in the shortest period of time.
I have, sorry, to, to extend this a little bit more. Have you been kind of watching the process that our district has been going through over the last few years? As far as how we got to have these properties available to, for sale?
Uh, not extremely close. Um, but, you know, with my wife being an art teacher, you know, I mean, um, she, she's been watching it and, you know, in a, in a distance, but not, not extremely close.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I, I guess, how have you guys gotten here?
It's been a several-year process and a lot of things at play got, got us to where we are now. Um, state politics, local need, um, lowering enrollment, things like that. Uh, it's, um, it's public education, so nothing stays the same for very long. So.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
I would agree with that, but these buildings are, you know, you grew up next to one of them. So, the local community is very invested and don't want them to sit. Or do they want them to be converted into something that's not appropriate for the, um, for the neighborhood? And so, yeah, there's a lot of, um, emotion, uh, surrounding these.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you again. Yep. Good night. I mean?
Yep, they're ready. Um, so.
They're scheduled for six?
Uh, six fifteen.
Okay.
So, you have up to fifteen minutes if you want. Otherwise, just let me know.
Let's refocus here and see if there's anybody having any problems with scoring. Or any, have any, I, I did mine. Um, all right. Okay.
Yep.
Um, if, if you want, we can, we can keep moving now, uh, if you're ready to save some time.
Keep going.
Because it's going to be a long night. Yes, absolutely. Yep, let's bring them in. It's the esports kids.
Are they going to come in after?
No. We did, they did something, recognition out there. So.
Did I have, can I have like, enough, two minutes?
Why don't we ask, can we ask esports to come in?
I asked Vicky and she's, they were, they were already finished and, and, no, they're not. Just tell Kale to hold off, all right? And see, it, it was, it's an honest mistake, Andrew. They're not. Um, let me talk to, I'll talk to Vicky about that. How's that? We're in this process now. They've already had pictures and everything taken out there and Vicky's talked to them. So, they're just, one, one other to say hi.
Just make sure you're hitting that button and it'll go hot, right here, the little.
Okay. And it does shut off. Okay.
Greetings.
You can't, you can't, it's, oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, it, I don't know. It does, the, the noise is kind of distracting. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, guys. We had a, we've had a, we have a complicated meeting tonight with lots of different, uh, stages. So, um, anyway, um, welcome. And, um, would you please go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Hold it. Okay.
There you go. No, you don't have to hold it.
Oh, okay.
Nope. Yep, yep.
Hey.
There you go.
Okay. Well, yeah, good evening. I'm Greg Landwerth. I'm a senior broker with, uh, NAI out of Appleton. Uh, I've been in the business for, for twelve years. And, um, I guess, uh, I guess something worth noting, I, I was involved in the, in the Nino Public School District dispositions that I'm sure you saw in our material. And, uh, so, th- there were four properties. Um, Shattuck School was one that we sold, Roosevelt, we sold. And, um, Jacobson Road was some vacant land. We sold that one. American Drive is, is still available.
Uh, hello, I'm Tom Fisk, um, uh, with NAI Fefferly, uh, managing broker and partner. I also work out of the Green Bay office. I've been in the business for thirty-six years.
I'm Adam Myers, NAI Fefferly, uh, senior broker out of the Green Bay office, and I've been doing this for eight years.
I'm James Wheeler, um, NAI Fefferly. I've been in the business about twenty years.
Okay. Yep, you're good. Um, if you want to go ahead and proceed as far as any kind of presentation or, um, anything you want to share about your, your company and your experience?
Uh, so just kind of a, a brief history of our company. Uh, we were founded by John Fefferly, who's still our chairman-in-chief. He was founded in nineteen seventy-one. Uh, we've grown from a company was, where it was just he and his wife in nineteen seventy-one to, to, today, we have, uh, five offices. We just opened an office in Milwaukee. We have Green Bay, Appleton, Sheboygan, and Wausau. Uh, with those offices, we essentially operate as two divisions in our company. We have a property management division where we employ approximately a hundred and thirty people. On the property management, we do everything from collecting rents and doing accounting all the way to, uh, mowing lawns and plowing snow in the winter, as well as building maintenance and things like that. On the brokerage side of the business, which is what we're discussing today, we have, including with the Milwaukee people, which we just added one today, I think we're at twenty-five. Uh, maybe a little higher concentration in Milwaukee and Appleton. Uh, but pretty generally evenly spilled, uh, spread out between all the offices. I, I have no idea what our combined experience is. Uh, two hundred and fifty years or something crazy like that. Uh, in a given year, we do somewhere between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and seventy-five transactions. Uh, we do not, uh, do any residential real estate unless it's a apartments or something like that. So, everything's commercial transactions from, uh, vacant land to medical buildings, to office buildings, industrial buildings, and kind of anything between retail, uh, all sorts of things. Uh, so, we kind of cover the market. Uh, we're the largest Northeast Wisconsin-based company. And now with the Milwaukee, we're the, I think, probably fifth or sixth in the state. So, that's kind of a brief history.
Anything else you'd like to share?
Yeah, I think it's important, and, and you already know this, but, um, I, I, we had two brokers assigned to the Nino Public School, uh, property dispositions. I, I was one of them, worked with Kale on that. And, um, they're, they're challenging and, um, you know, we, we, we sold three of the four already, one more to go. Uh, but they're unique and they're, they were challenging. I don't know if you pay attention to, to the news on, down in the valley very closely. But, um, you know, we, we ran into some real, um, challenges, and especially in Shattuck School. Um, just the way, um, it was portrayed in the media and, and the, the neighborhood. And so, it's, they can be very challenging, uh, you know, disposing of, of disposition of schools. disposing of disposition of schools, and, um, you know, some, it's just some of the inherent, uh, we, we, for, quickly, we, we would get an, one time we got an offer, and it was presented in an open meeting, and, you know, somebody was, was tuned in, watching it at home, and made an offer for a slightly larger amount the next day. You know, just kind of a, a unique, uh, situation that we hadn't, uh, considered, but we, we worked our way through that, and, um, so, I, I think that, you know, we, we gained a lot of experience through the, through the NINA, uh, dispositions, and, and I, I think that'd be valuable for you as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, James.
Thanks for coming out tonight, um, and I read your, your letter and, um, your submission, uh, can you speak to what your marketing approach was for those schools in NINA, and kind of, the buyers, the nature of the buyers, and the nature of the project, um, that those, uh, sales kind of created?
Sure, uh, well, in terms of marketing, uh, we had everything on LoopNet, are, are you all familiar with LoopNet, what that is, it, it's kind of like, yeah, it, it, it's kind of like MLS for commercial property, kind of. It's very expensive, um, not everybody uses it, we do, uh, because it works. So we had everything out on LoopNet, well, first of all, we, we evaluated the properties and we presented a, an opinion of value, and then we decided, um, on, on, on a, on a, asking price, went out to market with that price. You know, we, it was interesting, you know, it's, sometimes it's hard to value a school, because you don't know how repurposable it is, and so you actually go out there. I, I, I was kind of surprised on the Shattuck property, uh, just because of the amount of, of asbestos in the building, and, and, and the location in the community, and, and, you know, I, I didn't know if, I thought it might sell for a dollar, to be honest with you, because, um, it, it, um, it, it, the, the, the cost, I thought, I thought the site was worth more than the building, and, and, and the building might have to come down, and the school got some estimates on that, and it was over two million dollars, and that number had been a couple of years old. So it, it was well over two million dollars, uh, you know, there was only about fif- fifteen acres of land, I believe, you know, so if you do the math on that, it, you know, it's like, well, what are, what are you gonna do with this property? And so I thought it might sell for a dollar, um, we, we actually went to market at five hundred thousand, and, uh, it ended, ended up selling for five thousand one dollar. Uh, we, we had a variety of.
Five hundred?
Five hundred thousand one dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, five hundred thousand one dollar. So, um, we had a variety of different, uh, the, the interests that we had, a, a variety of uses, everything from tearing it down and just doing single-family, to multifamily projects, to repurposing the school, and the eventual, uh, buyer, um, that was his plan, was to repurpose the building into, um, some multifamily, and, and, and then having some single-family development over on, on the far end of it, where the, where the fields used to be. So, uh, ki- kind of the gamut, in, in fact, Tom, you brought a buyer. It wasn't successful, but.
Yeah, I, I brought a buyer that's done a number of redevelopment projects with things like schools and that sort of thing, his was more of a, a tax credit housing, uh, situation, uh, which the neighborhood, uh, wasn't completely positive about, and I, I think the other unique situation was, uh, he had submitted an offer that, the day it went to market at the asking price, and, you know, I think what we learned from that, through that process, was the public didn't feel like it had been marketed to the number of users, his offer was at oddly enough, five hundred thousand dollars, so he'd been beaten out by a dollar. Uh, but I think, trying to, the lesson, and the lesson that, you know, discussing things with our buyer, was having more of a public sort of, announcement of what's going on, here's multiple offers, so it's all might be the type of thing when we go to market with these schools, that we'd say, we're gonna go to market on, make up a date, say January first, and then we'd like to solicit offers by, say, February first, so everybody can see it, so there's an, an open thing, and we'd inform all of the buyers that we will not accept any offers, or anything, or not review any offers, for at least a week or two, so that there's as much interest as possible, and I know there's a great deal of interest in the schools in NINA, and that's where I think, I think it, the, the playing field stays the same, it's still open, but I think the public then is comfortable with the process, I know that there is a, a couple local citizens that called up and asked me how it had been marketed, how did my guy get in there, and, all that sort of thing, he's just a very active developer with a lot of these types of projects, so he was aware of what was going on, we do a lot of business with him, so. Um, just a little bit, you know, as, as Greg was talking about the process for marketing, uh, we would not only just use LoopNet, which the general public can look at, uh, it's somewhat like the MLS, um, but there's also other websites, we use Crexie, we use, uh,
Crexie.
Oh, Catalyst, Catalyst Ready Comms, which is another one, but in addition to that, we also have, because of our team of brokers, you know, we go through all of our internal people and say, here's an opportunity, who do you have that might be an investor, or somebody that might be interested, maybe it's an end user for one of the schools to maybe repurpose it somewhat, we go through that whole process, we also, as a company, um, maintain a database of developer, investors, that type of thing. Uh, right now, I think the list is somewhere, our standard e-blast list, if you listed a building tomorrow, we, we send out an e-blast list, I think right now it's about sixteen hundred and fifty people, give or take a little bit, that automatically get all of our listings, uh, we're members of the real estate associations, also CARW, which is a commercial association out of Milwaukee, that all the Milwaukee brokers are very active in, and the Milwaukee people are always coming up here, uh, I think a good example of that is, uh, the developer that just started, broke ground on the Nova Project on the other side of the river, um, where they had to move the, the Packer Display, the, the parking lot, so. So there, there's a lot of those types of things that we do, and I think the other thing that's unique is you'd have four people involved on this as a team, we all work really closely, we talk daily. Um, I think the other way that works is because then, when things like showings come up, or information has to be sent out and things like that, there's multiple people doing it rather than just one. Um, and then besides the, the four of us, we have a, of, of five assistants, we have a business development professional, our company also has Ian House Legal and some other things. Uh, they wouldn't technically be able to allow to represent the school district, but he's allowed to work, you know, suggested language for people, if we have, an investor, somebody that's like, I want to put an offer, how do I do this properly, what's the, the best way to go about it, and they can work out language that makes sense, we talked about setting limits for what offers could be reviewed, or reviewed. Um, he'd be really useful in that process.
Lynn. Oh, Brian?
Of your contacts in the area, and the markets, and whatever it is with that, like the contacts, um, how many of them would you consider local, and I'd say within Wisconsin, or, you know, this general area, I'm seeing an article for a different school that's for sale, that it's someone from significantly out of the area, and they're, they're getting a lot of negative press on it, so I'm just curious, the likelihood of contacts with, within the, you know, Wisconsin area?
I, I would think, the, the odds of it being somebody in Wisconsin, I, I don't want to say are a hundred percent, but ninety-five percent or ninety-eight percent, so, I just, something like this. Everybody, oddly enough, in the world knows where Green Bay is because of the Green Bay Packers, but, uh, but I think the reality, it's gonna be somebody from Wisconsin that wants to do something. And there's a lot of qualified investors, developers, and it could also be an end user, in which case, most likely, they'd be really local within Brown County.
And, and looking, uh, I, I keep referring to NINA just because it's such a good example, but, uh, most of the interests that we got came out of, um, uh, the Madison area, or, or Milwaukee. Uh, although our eventual buyer on Shattuck ended up being a, a guy from NINA, so, but we had very little, if any, out-of-state interest.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Was your NINA experience the only time you've sold a school?
Probably, although if, you know, I've done a lot of churches, which sometimes, if it's, some of them had schools within them, so, yeah.
And then, if, if you are our broker, that you say it will be the four of you who will be our team, okay, so, that's what they need to know, if someone who had sold a school is gonna be on the team.
Yeah, we, we, all four of us would be on it, and, uh, we, we would, because there's a lot going on, and a lot of tours, and a lot of meetings, um, so we, we would divide that up.
Go ahead.
How would you assess the market conditions for a sale such as these?
I, I think you would, it almost depends on the individual school itself, um, you know, some of it is the sort of re-adaptability to maybe a different user, how functional be for an actual end user. That being said, uh, I think despite what you see, uh, where the, to talk about higher interest rates, in general, the economy's in fairly good shape. Uh, most developers over the last, or investors over the last number of years have done reasonably well, uh, so they're, they're always looking for additional projects. Um, and there's a lot of them, like Greg said, Milwaukee and Madison, and I think the, the number just coming out of their areas, I think is, is really strictly, a, a case of, in, in Madison's case, just a high amount of growth that it's had, so that it's just a lot of developers out of that area, but then also just they're much larger populations. Um, so they just have a deeper pool of potential, uh, people for something like this, generally, I think the conditions are pretty good, they're not like they were a few years ago, rates were three and a half percent or something, but I still think they're pretty good. And there's a, a lot of people looking to do things, particularly with something like this, so, and these are also unique buildings from the standpoint that there could be end users that need space to do something, and with the cost of construction today being what they are, you know, just, they've gone dramatically beyond already being high. Um, existing facilities, sometimes that can be repurposed with relatively minimal expense, um, that could end up favoring one or two of the properties.
Anybody else? Brian?
You, you know, just add on to what Tom said too, if, if the, if the property, the asset has some historical significance, or there are sometimes some, uh, tax credits then available for the developer, and that can help, um, you, yeah, find, find a developer slash buyer for that property.
Okay.
Can you tell me what experience do you have working with community-based, um, investors, or nonprofit groups that may be interested in some of the property, I know, we've heard a lot of commercial development ideas, but working with, um, just community organizations or nonprofits in the area?
We work with kind of all sorts of different group nonprofits all the time, uh, whether it's, um, you know, an organization like Goodwill. It, to some degree, I, I don't want to group all nonprofits together, um, but we work with all sorts of them on an ongoing basis, depending on what their needs are, sometimes, it's just helping them get a value for their property, that type of thing, uh, they're, they're constantly, and that, that's why I think one or two of them could be a logical possible buyer for a school, because they're under that budgetary pressure, and they need space of some sort, and it might be far more economical for them to do something like this, rather than to go out and raise money, or, uh, for any sort of project. Uh, we're, we did a, a valuation for a non-for-profit group down in the Appleton area, it's kind of the name you'd say, but, oh, I know exactly who those people are. Uh, but they're in a situation with older facilities, they need newer facilities, and how do they make that work, so they're in a, a situation where they need to figure out what to do with their older facility, they really need a new facility, and how do they put all of that together, um, and, and all nonprofits are almost constantly in that battle of what do they do, how do they make something work, where does the money come from, all of that type of thing, so it's a really neat situation. We also work with a lot of churches and things like that, and they have the same issues all the time, so.
Lynn.
Can I assume that you have looked at the properties that we will be wanting to sell? I know you haven't walked through them, but you've, you've seen them.
Just really cursory, I know James is especially really familiar with them, and I know Adam's gone by them and stuff like that, so.
I was just wondering if any of you has any, you know, has any inspiration in looking at them, like, oh my God, this would be a perfect place for so-and-so, yes, no?
Do you have any?
I mean, I don't have anything to add other than, I think, to repurpose them, either apartments or office, or like Tom said, end user.
And I, I live in Appleton, but I'm from, from DePere, and lived in Green Bay a lot of years, so, so I, I, I did tour them, but I know the names, I know where they are, and yeah, there is a lot of marketability, there are a lot of potential.
Um, do you, um, have much, uh, experience working with the city of Green Bay, on projects of any sort?
Uh, we've done some work with the city of Green Bay over the last ten or fifteen years, depending on projects, uh, we've done some market evaluation work for the city, that type of thing. Uh, but nothing really recently from a development standpoint, uh, one of the things that we would do though, uh, when we get hired, notice I said when, um, but anyway, uh, but what we would like to do is we'd go sit down with the city of Green Bay and say, this is, this is what we're looking at, what do you think, obviously, from their standpoint, they would like to see, see things return to the tax rolls, um, so that's part of their incentive, but they also have to, to look at the community around it, and you, is the schools, you, you run into the same situation, so it, it's really understanding what their position is and that sort of thing, as well as us sitting down with them and explaining, you know, maybe these two properties we think really makes some sense for redevelopment, this one not so much, you know, how can we work together, that type of thing, so.
The other thing I wanted to mention is just looking at your company overview and experience, um, your company played a rather substantial role in the redevelopment of downtown Appleton.
Uh, yeah, John Pfefferly, our, our founder's an Appleton native, but he's done enormous work, amount of work over the last, especially the last thirty-five years between the building of the Copperleaf Hotel, owning the two twenty-two building, which was, uh, recently sold to US Venture, um, they're spending, I think, seventy-seven million dollars was the last number I heard on redevelopment of that building, uh, as well as putting together sites, um, that eventually got US Venture bought, along with, you know, like ten other projects.
I guess what I gather from that is you don't seem intimidated by large projects.
Oh, absolutely not.
Brian?
You mentioned that your management company on there, and I don't know, you know, like what type of firewalls you have set up in between that, are you able to utilize the management company to also look at the guts of the building and, and to prioritize that, it looks like you have a lot of trade people on there, you know, engineers, and just your experience with that area, do those two entities talk to each other, are you able to use one to help market the other part, is that included, or are they two completely separate companies?
Uh, they, they're technically one company, and there's a lot of communication back and forth, uh, if needed, we have a, he's a, I think we call him our project manager, but he will do an actual evaluation of a building, um, it is at a cost, because it's a very in-depth analysis, but it'll be all of the mechanical systems, electrical systems, roof, you know, parking lot, yeah, it, it's that whole type of thing, um, you know, if need be, but I, I think it was understanding you'd already done a lot of that, so. Um, but it, we, we find it's valuable to work with our property management people, on certain aspects, sometimes with the, in this case, more complicated listings.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody? Do you have anything else that you'd like to offer as far as, um, you know, kind of your vision for this work, um, I, I guess I, I, I might take the opportunity now to just ask, you know, like how much you've been following the, kind of the sensitivity of this over the last few years, and, and what our district has been through to kind of get to where we are now?
I, I think it's kind of hard to avoid the discussion about how sensitive it is, you, you know, anytime your, things are involving schools, you know, I think the other interesting thing, properties like this are in the middle of neighborhoods, so it, it isn't just a case of, it's a school and it's, so to speak, out in a farmer's field someplace, you know, everybody around it, and, you know, the schools, none of them were ever built last summer, they're, they're thirty, forty, fifty, second, whatever age, so no, it's, it's always something you have to be sensitive to. Um, I, I think the other unique thing, uh, you know, from our standpoint is, is you have four people, plus you have a large support staff, and then you have, you know, the people beyond that in our company, so when something like this comes up, uh, it isn't just a case of us sitting here, but it's a whole lot of other people behind us, and we bring it up in meetings, it's like, have you seen this, or have you heard this, and, and we'll have it where people will be like, you know, I was just in whatever community, I was just in Des Moines, Iowa, and I saw a project where. And I saw a project where something got redeveloped or there was a, a not-for-profit that bought a building and was able to make it into something really functional. And, and essentially reuse the building and bring it back to life, so to speak, and really make an asset in the community. All of those things are really difficult to do, but you know, it's a unique situation, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Is there really any element of your, of your business, your operating procedures, your processes, your client interactions where you, you are needing to put, you feel like you need to put some emphasis on making it a better process or a better experience?
I, I think every day. And part of the reason is, you know, our company, we, we're not technically family owned. But we think, we like to think that we're, we act like a completely family-owned company. And part of the reason we've been around for 50 years is because I think there's a continual process of learning and advancing. In the last few years with all the changes in technology, we've been investing a lot in technology. We're also finding that, I think one of the interesting things is the tightness in the labor market. So that's forced us to improve our processes over time. We've also brought in a, a number of younger people that have experiences just outside of the real estate business, but they've done other things. For instance, Adam's been in with us for seven years, but he worked for KI in salesmen. Before that, you were in Phoenix selling software. And so those kinds of experiences, when you get somebody like that, it gives us a whole different viewpoint on things. We also support different not-for-profit groups and, and everybody's going through this process now of how do they get better at what they're doing? You know, every single group, it isn't just the old thing where it used to be, you know, some large company is trying to improve its process or some organization. But every organization's going through it. My, my stepdaughter works for the United way down in the valley. They're always going through the process, you know, so it's, it's kind of a never-ending sort of thing. And you're doing it here, I'm sure, where it's how are we doing things today? How did we do them last year? And then how are we going to do this in a couple of years? Because I think your enrollment is decreasing over time. So how do you handle that? We're working with a couple of other educational groups where they have declining enrollment. And it's very difficult because you have an infrastructure and all that sort of thing. In fact, well, we could probably say we're, we're, there's some student housing Adam and I are taking to market. I think it, does it go out tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a, two apartment buildings that are owned by Saint Norbert College that it's now excess because of their declining enrollment. And so how do they get some value out of those? So we're literally going to market and, and that sort of thing, but it's, it's part of an ongoing process. You know, how do you balance all of these things as well as kind of your place in the community and what you're trying to provide, so.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming out. I, I really, past experiences, I, I dealt with your company before. And I think that the individual that represent me was very well knowledgeable and very well prepared. And, and the, the process went very seamlessly and it was done completely without any kind of loophole or any kind of mistakes in there. So, yeah, so I dealt with your company before, so just want to share that with you. That, that doesn't say that we, we are not interviewing the other candidate, not being fair to them, but, but that, that was my experience.
Sorry, anybody have last thoughts? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and, and presenting and answering questions. Right, I think Kale will see you out. All right, thanks. So we're just going to take a little more time now to grade and before we see the final candidate.
Our next group is here and ready, so if you just want to give me a heads up when you're ready. If anybody wants to take a quick break or finish grading or anything like that, just let me know when, when you want me to go grab them. Rick? Might as well. So I would say from a, from a district standpoint, all three that we brought forward, we certainly feel we could work with. So we would not have brought them forward. And one other piece too, I did follow up with a few of the references. I still have some outstanding calls, but I've at least contacted one reference from each, all positive experiences with them. So no red flags from the, the reference standpoint. And if there is anything contingent on a reference check too, I'd be more than happy to follow up with that. That mic, that means you're hot then. Hot mic button right there, and then when they ask a question, I'll shut it off.
Understood.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, if you could please just introduce yourselves and talk a little bit about your company.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
We'll figure it out, sorry with that.
Believe me, it's, it dogs us all, it's, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for the Board of Education for allowing RE Commercial this opportunity to be part of your broker selection process. You know, I thought I would know more of the board members, but you know, it's been a while since I've, I've been working with the board. But my name is Todd DeVilliers and this is Mark Veris and we're with RE Commercial Real Estate. You know, we've been in the market for, you know, over 30 years. In 2009, we started RE Commercial. You know, during that long period of time, we've worked with a number of local companies, been involved in numerous industrial, residential, multifamily conversion, higher use type projects. And the, you know, as far as RE Commercial and, you know, we're strictly commercial real estate brokers. And we've been involved in the market for, you know, you know, some time, you know, we have designations that allow us to, you know, reach a higher, you know, market penetration. We use, you know, our SIOR and CCIM designations, which is something that is, you know, specific to the commercial real estate industry. We've worked on a number of transactions over the years with a number of businesses, but specifically the Green Bay Public Schools. I, I go back a ways, but you know, when you were on Bond Street, but more specifically with Josh Pachek over the last few years, looking at your valuations and trying to determine, you know, which properties to, you know, put more money into or not. But that's kind of, I think, how the initial list came together. So we've been involved, we know the properties and, excuse me. We've looked at, at all these properties and specifically kind of, you know, how do you determine the value? And there's a specific highest and best use process that we've looked at for all these properties. And, you know, let Mark Veris talk to, you know, kind of our process and value in these properties and trying to determine kind of how do you proceed? And kind of reach its highest value when you go to market.
So.
There you go. We're being recorded, so yeah, the mics are.
So these properties are unique. If it was more cut and dry, like an industrial building or retail building, fairly simple, you know, who your market is, you know, what you're going to do with it. So these you have to drill down on, of course, the highest and best use of each facility is an educational facility. So if you had another school, let's say, that needed a site in that location approximately that size. And they're looking, they can't build one, you know how expensive it is to build new facilities, it's outrageous. And you could have something here for a fraction of the cost. Well, you might not want to do that. So you might want to, need to restrict it. And even if you didn't, what's the likelihood there's going to be a school that would need it? So that's the top value. So then you look at other uses, okay, it's a building. What can we use it for? So it could be vocational training, it could be some type of recreational facility or a community center. You know, you go through the list, so you try to exhaust each of those options to have somebody use the structure, which would offer the most value. So the other use for these buildings that's fairly, you know, hot today is converting these to residential facilities, similar to the Irwin School. And to do that, there's going to be a lot of developers that are very interested in that. Problem is it's not cheap. So you can get it done and it costs a lot of money to do it and there's a market for it. But you need the money to do it. So you, the developers have the money, but what it costs to renovate and what rents you need to get, sometimes it don't match up in the market. So the difference is what you can get from municipal participation or the, you know, TIF money, whatever the case may be. And the hot area right now is tax credits, we did tax credits, possibly some historical on a few of these. That's a little bit tougher because they have restrictions on what you can do. You have to keep the windows and that doesn't work well. But anyway, so that's the next level of who's going to buy this facility. And some of the buildings you can't renovate because of the, just the shape of the building or the size or whatever the reasons restrictions are, it's just not feasible. So then you have to look at, okay, what do we do with the land? So you're kind of stepping down each of these items, what's the land worth? And some of these that the land may be more valuable than converting the building because it's not possible. And then what is the area, what's the underlying value of the land for, say, single-family housing? You know, but during the process, you're talking to neighbors, you're talking to anybody that uses the existing facility. And then you would drill down into the other facets of the potential development. But lastly, it's the team that we put together to determine some of these numbers, you might need a, some demo bids, perhaps you already have those. You may need a civil engineer to look at all the options. You may need an architect to put together some high-level plans because we want to get our arms around what this development is going to offer before you take it. before you take it out to market, so you can educate the market on what it's going to take and why they want to pay for that particular building. So but it's just, it's a unique property or a unique portfolio. The other thing we'll do is for whatever buildings are going to be converted, potentially the residential, there's more, there's a developer that might buy three of them. Or the case may be, they'll buy the package because they want to, you know, maximize their opportunities in this particular area. So.
Yeah, let me expand on what Mark was saying, you know, each property before we go to market, you know, we're going to kind of mold what is the highest and best use and kind of, you know, define, you know, what path we take to, you know, go after that particular buyer or developer. But, you know, we've been through this process, you know, recently, you know, quite a few times. So we kind of know the pitfalls and we know how hard it is to make the numbers work when you renovate an old building. You know, for a brand new building for, you know, on the lower end scale, you can build, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit. But sometimes you pay more than that thinking that you're going to save money by renovating a shell. And it just doesn't, you know, pan out that way. And so it's all about making the economics work and, you know, affordable housing is a really good catchphrase, but yet sometimes it's hard to, you know, make that happen without incentives. And they're out there and these projects are happening. But it just takes a long time to build your team and mold it. And sometimes, you know, the buyers and, you know, just don't have the time to, you know, make that all, you know, pan out. So. But I guess, you know, we, you know, left, you know, the valuation portion of it kind of, you know, open unless you want to talk specific valuation on specific properties. You know, I think, you know, we've got a handle on, you know, without going into these facilities, you know, you know, an idea of, you know, what our thoughts are in that, if you want to, you know, expand that, I welcome your questions.
Go ahead, Rick.
Actually, that was my question along those lines is, given what you've seen, what do you think, how would you assess the prospects given the market conditions?
Well, we have eight properties, one of them is a vacant parcel, about twelve acres. And that's a great piece of property. It's multifamily, higher density, single family. It's, you know, in an area that, you know, seeing a lot of new development pushed by the city. So and I think that site, you know, is a valuable commodity that you'll sell quickly. You have seven existing facilities. Of those seven, looking at your long-term capital improvement plans and what, you know, state those, some of those billions are in. I think two of those billions probably you should be looked at being raised just because of the land value that, or its building structure value. And, you know, I think both those are in municipalities where you could extract some value for a a higher density residential development for, for my developer. And then you have another two of your facilities which are older structures, but, you know, based on their location. I think that their highest and best uses for specifically residential could be senior residential. But it's going to be residential and you might be able to add some more density on the sites. And then you got four of the properties which maybe offer more than residential, maybe storage or, you know, something that, you know, other than residential and, but, you know, it all comes at a cost. And so we will do an economic analysis on every single one based on the marketplace. But a lot of times it's zoning that knocks you down and, you know, but I think the city will do backflips trying to get these properties back on the tax rolls. Because, you know, that's just, you know, I think how you have to approach each one individually.
But you still have to have the conversation municipalities about getting the proper zoning. They have to be, or we could have great ideas, but if the municipality is not on board, you're getting very far and you're going to take, you know, what you can get. I mean, for the residential, obviously, we might need a new residential zoning thing.
James?
Thank you. Reading your proposal or your submission, as you navigate this hierarchy from, you know, that you just described, trying to determine the best fit per facility, you, at one point in your proposal, recommend that we engage an architect and kind of put together kind of a use plan as part of like a marketing strategy. Would that be at cost to district or is that a cost that your organization would take on and wrap into a sale? Can you walk me through that?
That would be the, the cost of the district. I mean, we can participate in some of that, we're not opposed to that. We've done some in the past. And when I say an architect, we're not putting together detailed plans. We're basically taking a footprint and saying, well, we have people that can do this. We give recommendations and work with them to say, okay, high level, this is how many units we can fit here. And then you figure out how many units you can fit there. You're not designing, you're not designing the bathrooms. You're getting a unit count and then a developer can take it for, and maybe an average size of the unit. So a developer can take that and run their financial models to say, okay, here's the size. Here's what it's going to cost us, here's the rents we're going to be getting, here's what we can afford to pay for this. So, but, and then same thing with the civil engineer. A lot of the civil engineers we work with, sometimes they'll do it on the come. We're not talking a forty acre site, we're going to have a smaller footprint and say, hey, even we've looked at some of these and said, boy, this, this is how we put the road in. We know we can lay it out ourselves, but on some of them, they'll do a certain amount of work, you know, brought us because we've worked with them in the past. So we can add that type of value, saying, how much can we get without paying them? So.
I was going to add one more comment. On those space plans, I mean, for a normal building, I would say, you know, it's hit or miss if you would want to invest your time into that. We just sold the AMS building and, you know, that was a monstrosity. And, you know, we did space plannings on that and we said, oh, great, we can do, you know, three hundred units out of it, you know, but it was just, you know, you had a seventy percent common factor, you know, to make that building work. So it just didn't flow and you didn't know that until you did that block plan. And then, then you realize you got to tear that thing down, you know, if you want to do multifamily, you know. Unfortunately, there were no, you know, large tenants floating around, so that's the path that that one went. But so that's the importance of it, you know, especially in these redevelopment opportunities.
I just have one more question for you. So in your proposal, you are silent on other members or sides of team are, is your organization the two of you? Or can you speak to the nature of your organization?
Yeah, we have a small boutique firm of three brokers, Mark Verris and I and Sean Brick. And then we have an administrative assistant and intern. And, you know, so, and we've been that way for the past twenty-five years.
Do you have confidence that we are going to be successful with this project and that you can make us successful?
We're very confident we'll move every single property. You know, within a range that, you know, again, the range that we put in our analysis, we still have to take a step back and give you a better, to tighten that up a little bit. But we're very confident every single property will sell. So what are they going to sell for? You know, that's really what we have to work together to, to figure out. We're, we're not too far off on, on some of these, some of these we have need to learn a little bit more. But we believe within the next, you know, nine to twelve, this is from starting the process and putting on market that these properties will all sell.
All right, Brian?
It's, are the majority of your contacts and ideas of developers or people that would be interested in purchasing this, are they local within Wisconsin? Do you think it's going to stretch outside of that? Do you feel it's going to be people that are vested in our community here?
It's a statewide net. You know, the redevelopment of buildings for multifamily, especially using, you know, state tax credits, we did tax credits. It's a very small pool and, but we know the people in that pool. It's the new guys, they're venturing off for the one timers, you know, that are, you know, those are the ones you have to, you know, they seem to be sprouting like mushrooms these days, you know, and, but that's great. You know, it's more activity and, you know, just a lot of these redevelopment plays because office buildings have, have, you know, a lot of them are, you know, being renovated because you can't find tenants. So, you know, this is a real popular concept right now and there's a lot of people that are, are very specialized in this redevelopment play that we kind of stay in touch with and, but we still, you know, we know enough, you know, the economics and how to tie it up in a bow. But, you know, if we, you know, we start too high, you'll stay on the market too longer and you'll sell for a lower price. You got to hit that sweet spot of, you know, why does it make economic sense, you know, for that developer to, you know, chase this deal and not build brand new down the street?
And frankly, there's not a Chicago developer, an Indianapolis developer that'll work on projects this small. It doesn't pay for them to come up. If they're building new, like they did over by the rail yard, T W G, you know, that's a ground up, that's a big, you know, two hundred unit development. But the footprints of these aren't going to allow for more than thirty, sixty units, whatever the case may be. So they're just, they're just not going to be interested in this area.
Brian?
And can you elaborate a bit on your experience working with like community-based organizations and nonprofit organizations that, you know, these, these are coming up in neighborhoods? They're coming off the tech, you know, there, there's school properties on there. So looking at how do we help those neighborhoods and, and that setting? Just your experience working with local community-based organizations and nonprofits?
Well, in our commercial brokerage world, we've, you know, represented, you know, nonprofits to find office space and things of that nature. You know, there's been some housing development plays that were involved with that, you know, we were, they, you know, contributed, you know, financing. But, you know, for the most part, you know, these projects in the neighborhood, you know, what's good for the neighborhood is, you know, seeing these properties active and alive and not dormant and dark. And, you know, and, and the holding costs will eat you alive on these things. So, you know, I think that's kind of, it's a, it's a massage and, you know, the, the nonprofits, you know, if there's a nonprofit out there that could use these facilities, you know, I think that's probably the highest and best used before you convert it into, you know, something else. You know, you find those users that can use those structures that don't compete with the Green Bay Public School System. And I, you know, the layer that we should be peeling back first, you know, and we will. But it's all about timing. Sometimes you don't hit that timing right because, you know, they're looking at the end of the school year and not the beginning of the school year. And so it will, will chase any and all opportunities.
You know, quite a while ago, a long time ago now, we were involved in that job center building on, what street was that on? Adams? You know, that, yeah, that building was, you know, twenty thousand square feet. Sometimes these, we've done several leases with nonprofits. But sometimes they only need two thousand square feet or a small footprint. Well, that was a twenty thousand, fifteen, twenty thousand square foot building. And it was job center for, you know, years after Aon or whatever it was in the past. So you can't rule any of them out for a number of size, but they're, they're definitely a serious player in the market.
Anybody? Anybody have any questions? Do you guys have anything else that you'd like to share with us? What about your company or your vision for these properties?
You know, Mark responded, you know, can we sell these properties? I believe we can sell every one of these properties. And I think at the valuations that, and we put a lot of, you know, thought in, in market research to try to hit the right spot to, you know, what we think we could sell these properties for. So we, you know, are confident in that and love to work with the Green Bay Public School District.
Have you been following the progress of the district as far as why these properties are available and kind of the process that the district's gone through over the last several years to get where we are right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we're, and kind of when we were working with Josh before Kale in the, in the past, you know, and this assignment is easy compared to what you had to do to, to the closures. I mean, that was, you know, a lot of hard work and a lot of input that you had. And I didn't envy you for having to, to do that. That was the tough part. This is a, you know, transactional type situation that's quite frankly, much easier than, than that. So, but we've followed the whole thing, so.
But you understand kind of how sensitive this is to our community?
Yes, understood. I graduated from West High, so I always follow it.
Okay. All right. I think that completes our time with you. Thank you so much for coming and presenting to us. Kale will see you out.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You are faster than others.
Yep. All right, so we're going to take a little time now to complete the grading.
Everyone else get everything uploaded, okay? And Laura, if you want to look at totals too, then you can see that, the whole team can see that. Okay.
And Laura, if you want to look at totals too, then you can see that, um, the whole team can see that. Okay. I didn't ask them, I, I, I haven't asked them that question. I don't know if they're, yeah, if they have other clients you're saying, um, that they would bring forward.
Like if there's a buyer that they know would put them in contact with that, like when you're buying a house, I assume a commission is a commission. So there's going to be communication between them anyways, correct?
I, I didn't, I, through this process that has not come up. Um, so that would, whoever we award, we could, we could look at that. I, I can't say yes or no to that, uh, with certainty. Um, and just to note, um, there, the, for the RE commercial number, um, plus my, it'd be plus one. I had point fives on here that I did not include. So being with the dropdown menu, so that total could be five, seven, eight. So you know.
So this, is this total now it? This is, these are the, the finished numbers?
Just wanted to review, just to make sure their numbers were good. Um, if there were anything looks, um, wrong, please let me know. But yes, that should be the total. I'll send it to everyone's here quickly. Here's everyone.
Yeah, you have, well, I think we have to have the motion and then we can have a discussion, a free vote and see if we get a majority.
So, um, the, if these are the final numbers, it looks like, um, NAI Pufferly, um, has received the most votes. And, um, so it, should we listen to dissenting opinions now or do we want to wait till the motion? Okay. Well, let's go back to our agenda then. Um, all right, um. All right. So, uh, would someone please read the motion?
I move that we in, enter into a relationship with NAI per free, um, to, um, for brokerage services.
There is a, there is a motion.
No.
Yeah, uh, D. Yeah, go to D. You just have to insert the name.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I'm on the one. Um, that NAI per free, I'm saying that right, to be awarded the contract to assist the Green Bay Area Public School District in real estate negotiation and sale of properties. As per the terms and conditions outlined in the request for proposal Q two, four, two, five, dash, one, one, real estate broker services be approved.
Second. All right. Open the floor to discussion or questions. Brian.
I appreciate that. Both of these were, all three of them, I appreciate their proposal and the scores came very close. Um, you know, I, I had one slightly higher, but not drastically. So, um, I'm sure whoever it does is going to have a challenge and will do the best they can. So.
James.
I agree, Brian. And if you look at my scoring sheet, the one really differentiator for me was the size and assets of the second vendor versus the third vendor, um, in, um, T two, uh, that engage in extended network.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm actually same thing. The, uh, the third one, uh, RE, what, what, what impressed me was his building by building assessment, which took it to some levels that I don't think the other ones did, but I still have no problem with, with NAI. Um, I can support that, but, um, I think it's that building by building assessment that is going to be the most challenging part of this as we go forward. And so anybody who is already thinking about that should, uh, or we should take that expectation with, with NAI if in fact we as a group vote on them. Cause I, I think they, they should, we should have that expectation.
Okay. Any, cool.
Yeah. Um, and those are very valid points. And, uh, for me, uh, it's, it's, it's a little bit of what I have experienced in the past with, uh, the, the second company, uh, with the overall professionalism that they, they present themselves here tonight. And, uh, the idea that they are strictly a hundred percent commercial real estate, uh, company. And they have different departments that, uh, they could tap into to, uh, help us in this process. I, I thought that it's a, it's a very value for, for our district and, um, that, that was part of my decision.
Andrew.
I think we had three quality presentations and, um, I, I think, um, NAI will do well for us. And, and honestly, I think the, well, we'll never, we'll never know because you can't go back and rerun it. But I would, I would imagine that what the district will end up receiving financially, uh, with any of these three is probably going to be very, very close to the same. Maybe, maybe one of them has the, you know, this is, there's no, there's no secret about these, these properties. It's been chance, chances are people who are interested have been interested in them for years since this process started. So we will see how, um, and I certainly can support NAI.
Anybody else like to chime in? Okay. Then I think we're ready to vote. Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. Who are you able to vote online?
You can just do a verbal vote. Yeah. Did you want a verbal vote then?
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. We're going to, um, go to our regular meeting now. So if I would entertain a moment, um, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. We're going to go immediately into our next meeting. All right. Yes. Do you have to re- restart recording again? Okay. No, we're still rolling. Okay. All right. So I just want to, um, uh, welcome everybody to this now, what is now our regular, um, Board of Education meeting for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And um, the roll call, please. Lee.
Here.
Crossen.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Okay. All members are present. Would you all please rise for the pledge? All right. Moving on to the mission statement. Would someone like to read that?
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
All right. Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement statement. We, the members of the Green Bay Area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here for a recorded time and have, and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. All right. Next, we're going to our intercity student council report. Our, we don't have students with us tonight, um, because of the kind of unusual nature of our meetings, um, uh, tonight, but, uh, we are, so we'll go from that into a public forum. If there's anyone who wants to speak. All right. I think we can move on. And the next thing we have in the updates is the superintendent's update. Vicky?
Okay, thank you. Kenzie's going to pull up a slide deck for us. Looks like one. Oh, thank you. Okay, um, again, I'm going to highlight some of the critical priority work that's been going on in the, since our last regular board meeting. Um, earlier, well, when was this? Two weeks ago, maybe now? David Johns, myself and Dr. Eric Khan were invited to participate in a convening at the Gates Foundation in Seattle. Uh, they were looking at, um, how we prepare students for post-secondary. We were chosen along with ten other school districts across the country, and it was a great opportunity to collaborate and learn. And because we participated, they will be making a five thousand dollar donation to our education foundation.
Yay.
Um, two weeks ago on Saturday, My New Vang, who's one of our Lombardi teachers, uh, she kicked this off a couple of years ago. It was a, among New Year's celebration, uh, that used to be held at Lombardi this year. It was over at Edison, and I know many of the board members attended. That's My New in the middle with the, the white border around her. Uh, really well attended. There were over one thousand participants at the whole day event.
There was a crowd.
There was a crowd. Uh, it was great to see so many parents and students participating.
Some fierce volleyball.
And, uh,
Corn, cornhole, no, cornhole?
Cornhole.
Yeah. Is that what it's called? Yeah, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Very competitive.
Kenzie, can you advance? Michelle Hanson, uh, she's the woman in the back on the left. She's the president of Crest Foundation. She's also our former president of the Education Foundation. She recently awarded, uh, one of our volunteers, Terry Auger, uh, the older gentleman on the right-hand side. He's, I think eighty-two and has been weekly volunteering at Red Smith. And he, uh, needed funds to buy something for, uh, his work with the students. So the Crest Foundation donated seven thousand dollars to this project. So we thank Terry, uh, for his commitment to our students and of course to the Crest Foundation for recognizing that. Intentional community engagement. It's one of our critical goals. And because of that goal, earlier this month, we were invited by one of our parents, that's Virginia Muah. She was awarded first place for tree decoration at Austin Strabel Airport. And she invited representatives from the district to join the, the presentation. And that wouldn't have happened if we wouldn't have made that connection earlier in the air. It was, it was really a fantastic ceremony. On the right-hand side, there's a picture of Ms. McCoy and I and, uh, two of our staff members who also participated.
Tree is spectacular.
Gorgeous. The new teacher, uh, voluntary professional development is something that, um, Mike Fries and his department really have grabbed on to. It's hard to tell in this picture because I'm on the far side of the room, but it was a packed crowd of new teachers that after a full day of working, take advantage of the opportunities that Mike offers them. This particular one, um, two of our social workers were presenting. Do you recall what the topic was, Mike? Yeah. So, um, circles and advisory time, uh, great discussion with the new teachers. Uh, and a really great opportunity to increase the likelihood that we will retain these staff members for long periods of time.
Can I see a question? What would, what would you define as a new teacher? Like new to the profession, new to the district or?
Michael, would you?
Both.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, both.
Okay. All right.
I love this kid. Um, David and I had a wonderful opportunity to go over to Washington Middle School and hear from one of the middle school students, uh, to gain his feedback on how the curriculum is working. And, uh, it was a wonderful, wonderful way to spend the afternoon. You might recognize him because he was part of the music video at the beginning of the school year, the Together We Are One song.
Indicates David Johns' experience as a middle school principal more than right there. So.
Ingrid Parker Hill, uh, and I joined the chancellor at his UW Green Bay open house. This was a great opportunity to mingle with business leaders and elected officials at the Widener Center. That was last week. I've been in conversations with downtown Green Bay about what role the Green Bay Area Public School District could play in the public market that should be opening in about a year. The upper level is going to have space for classrooms. And they will have a kitchen, a commercial kitchen available for utilization. So they're picturing opportunities for our students to, um, go to the farmer's market, grab some fresh food and come up and, uh, learn how to cook. We're excited about the opportunities there. This was a fabulous event. Um, Mike, if you could join us just for a second, I'm going to kick it off and then I'd ask you to share a little bit more. Saturday, uh, this cohort graduated from UW Green Bay. They're the master's teacher cohort and Mike and his team initiated this.
It's truly a partnership, um, um, situation here where, uh, our own Amy Fish, our friends at UW Green Bay, um, Murray Visti, um, professors at UW Green Bay worked together to apply for a Department of Workforce Development grant a number of years ago to support our staff members who were interested in becoming teachers, but for any number of reasons, had not had that opportunity previously. And so we were able to move forward, um, fifteen staff members through a two-year master's program resulting in K nine licensure. Um, a few of them have tacked on the ESL licensure. Um, at least one is continuing to pursue special education licensure. And, uh, the, all, all, all the folks there pictured there, and even those that couldn't attend that night, um, have secured positions working as teachers, um, or more. Um, we have someone who's also a manager actually, um, in our school district. And so it's a true internal pipeline. We're very grateful for, um, the partnership. And Vicky was nice enough to be there, as was Principal Patty Mavis. Um, and, uh, there was not a dry in the house when folks talked about the life-changing experience that it's been. It's giving me chills just rethinking about it, Vicky. So. It's giving me chills just rethinking about it, Vicky, so.
Since you use the word pipeline, what does the next cohort look like size-wise?
That's a great question. A lot of this is contingent on funding. So this particular grant, we were able to be the fiscal agent around. The grant that's out there right now with EWD, we are not eligible for. So we've been, we did outreach to various post-secundaries and ed prep programs, encouraging them to apply, offering letters of support and partnership. And this data's earmarked, I think, up to $1.5 million or $1 million total. And so we're fingers crossed, hoping that we'll have an announcement that one of our colleagues were accepted and were able to be part of the process in some form or fashion, so. Yeah, so to be determined the next few weeks.
Folks, those are our newest teachers. And they started here with us in positions that weren't teaching positions. And we have a lot to be proud of. They're spread out across the entire district, and they are so glad to work for us. It was a very special night. Southwest had their musical newsies that was over the last couple of weekends, and it was a fabulous showing, even in the cold, frigid night. Was it Thursday night?
I can't remember what night.
Attendance wasn't great that night because of the cold, but it was a wonderful musical. And the students were on, Cammy's on what channel? Is it Channel 2? Bottom right, the students performed on one of the morning shows. Is it 5? Sorry, Cammy. Was that Cammy again? David Johns did an interview. What channel was it, David?
It's 2, right there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. David did a really great interview, kicking off the portrait of a graduate. So if you haven't had a chance to see that, I think it's about five to seven minutes. Really, really great interview, and does a great job explaining what this work is all about. And then last week, I've had the opportunity to meet with some of our local representatives. The topics included Act 10, Act 20, and the elimination of the Department of Education. So we're going to keep those communication lines open, and Joel Kitchen, for example, was very interested in getting our feedback about Act 20, and if there are portions of it that we would like him to consider bringing forward for amendment, we will do that. So we, along with other districts, are overwhelmed with the timeline and the number of students that would have independent plans. So, for example, we might consider asking for that. He, of course, said no promises, but I think he would bring concerns forward. And then, lastly, thank you to the Green Bay Police Department for their efforts today. Since 3:30 this morning, we've been working on this, and they came to resolution, in my opinion, very quickly. So we know that our schools are safe and that this threat was not credible. So we're grateful to the Green Bay PD.
Okay. Thank you, Vicky. Oh. Go ahead, Brian.
As a parent in the district, and I haven't hidden where my children go to school, I've never doubted our district's ability to respond to situations like this. I was hoping that the 4:30 text with that earth that came through was a fog two-hour delay, but it wasn't. But I am never doubted our district's ability to handle situations like this. I've never doubted the safety of my own children in our schools and the partnership that our administration has with the police department, with the city on an ongoing basis. So when we were talking about other incidents, or interactions with the city, some of it isn't as clear as how quickly and responsibly our district can address situations like, we've gotten good at it because it's happened before, but the system works, and I want to thank all of our team that has done that as well. Hopefully, someone are listening or they can forward it on and get those messages out. But I'm very proud to be a parent of the Green Bay School District with that, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vicky. Moving on to the legislative update. Do we have one this month?
It's very brief. The governor has been holding listening sessions, virtual listening sessions, and going around the state. It's best chance to promote public education, the impacts that the budget has on it, so I encourage you to look into it. There's gonna be some stuff happening, obviously, with it, and just kind of keep an eye on that and contact your legislators and promote public education.
Thank you. All right, C is the Clean Energy Advisory Committee update. That will be Kale.
Thank you. Another brief update. So the Clean Energy Committee met. Darn it, I should have brought that date with me. Last week. Our final meeting as a group, as we prepare our recommendation for the board to meet our 2035 clean energy goals. The team had a fairly good consensus on the memo and the plan to meet those goals. So we just have some tweaking to do on that recommendation as far as how we're framing that, and then intend to bring that to the board in January. Any questions?
I'll just say I've been attending these meetings, and I'm getting a lot out of it, and the people at the table are all serious people who care deeply, and that is a nice room to be in.
Yeah, and we look forward to kind of wrapping up this recommendation process and then getting into the action items of that.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Could someone please read the motion?
Move that consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to some action items where we have a number of votes. Let's start with A. Could someone read the motion?
I move that the Head Start Youth Apprenticeship positions transferred from the district budget to the Head Start budget as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Because for anyone who's watching from home, these are all items that we've already had a chance to discuss. We can discuss them further tonight if we want to, but we might just breeze through these votes, so. Anyway. See, no questions. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, number two, or B, I should say. School calendar. Could someone read the motion, please?
I recommend that the 2025-26 school calendar as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, C, the new roof on Washington. Could someone read the motion, please?
I move that the Northern Metal and Roofing be awarded the bid for the roof replacement project at Washington Middle School in the amount of $476,900 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voted over.
Okay, D. Could someone read the motion? There.
I move that IEI general contractors be awarded the bid for the general contractor renovations project at Head Start in Bellevue in the amount of $1,063,700 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, could someone read the motion for E?
I move that Somerville Incorporated be awarded the bid for engineering and design services at Howe Elementary Community School in the amount of $256,500 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Someone read the motion for F?
I move that Somerville Incorporated be awarded the bid for engineering and design services at Sullivan Elementary School in the amount of $500,000 as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, could someone read the motion for G?
I'll move that revisions to Board of Education Rule 433, intro district transfer procedures as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. H. Someone read the motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education policies and rules in the 300 and 400 series policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Yes.
A request that we pull both rule and policy 443. We don't have the right policy in here, the updated one. So a request to pull those two. 443 rule and policy.
I'd like to offer a friendly that we pull 443 rule and policy to your amendment.
My second.
Okay.
Accept.
Okay.
I don't believe that really exists, but I'm not gonna argue it.
Okay. How do we vote on, do we just voice vote? All in favor? It was a friendly. All right, it's accepted, so. I'm not sure what the next step is here. To vote, go ahead and vote. All right, Kinsey?
It's already pulled, okay. Becker?
Okay, this is the final vote on the package as amended?
Yes.
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, moving on to I. Could someone read the motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education policies and rules in the 300 and 400 series policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion carries with all board members voting in favor.
And the last one, I, or no, I'm sorry, J. Someone read the motion, please?
I move that Board of Education policies and rules in the 300 and 400 series policies as presented be repealed.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. That is the end of our meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session. Would you read the motion, Lynn?
I move that the Board adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy should be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, more specifically to it, potential litigation matters regarding the district and Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary action of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems on the investigation of charges against specific persons except where Paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, to consider the administration's recommendation for termination of a staff member.
Can I get a second?
My second.
Kinsey?
Becker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned into closed session. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.